Today is Tuesday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is five forty-six P. M., and I would like to call to order the special study session meeting of the City Council of the City of Emeryville. This meeting is being conducted subject to exemptions to the Brown Act provided for under Assembly Bill three sixty-one. During the COVID state of emergency, the governor has authorized public agencies, including the City of Emeryville, to conduct their meetings via tele or video conference to help prevent the spread of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And in accordance with AB three sixty-one, the City Council, the Mesa Board, and the Redevelopment Agency, not less than every thirty days, will consider and adopt a resolution stating that the COVID pandemic still exists and that it's in the interest and safety of our health, of the health of our staff, our members and the public, to continue these meetings remotely. We have done that, and so this meeting is being conducted in that manner. Members of the public who wish to comment for items on tonight's agenda or not on tonight's agenda will have opportunities to do so throughout the course of the evening. You can do that by either using the raise hand feature on Zoom or pressing star nine if you're joining us by telephone. Or you have a couple of ways of submitting a comment card electronically. The link for this meeting is posted on today's agenda, and with it is an opportunity to submit public comment electronically, or even go to the City of Emeryville's website under council meeting agendas, and there is a submit online speaker card form, and I will ask the clerk at each item whether or not we have received any online speaker cards. So with that, I will ask if the clerk would please begin by taking the roll call.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bauders?
Here, thank you. We have a quorum. This time, I'll ask for approval of the final agenda. Members, if there are no changes, I will entertain a motion to approve this agenda.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Member Donahue, seconded by Member Medina to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders?
Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. I will ask each member if you've had ex parte communications with any of the members of the applicant parties who are subject to tonight's study sessions. I'll begin with Member Welch. Do you have anything to report?
Yes, I had a meeting with Mike Lee and Mike Keel from CA Ventures and also received an email from Rod Hemney from HKIT Architects.
And that applies to item six point two, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Member Donahue?
Yes, Mr. Lee chatted with, and I believe the same email.
Okay, and that's item six point two as well. Member Martinez?
I also met with the developers of fifty-eight fifty for item six point two, and that was back on April eighth, and we actually discussed a slightly different version of the layout than what's being presented today, but just their previous iteration.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Medina?
I had the same meetings and received the same email communication for item six point two. I apologize to my colleagues, I'm very sick. I'm gonna sound like this.
Okay, and I'm gonna guess that you'll join me, Vice Mayor Medina, in item six point one. We also met with the public market, Mark Steffen and Lauren Kraus, and on item six point two, I have met with Mike and Mike, and I have also received email communications from Mr. Hemney as well. Okay, that concludes ex parte communications. Item five is public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. A member of the public who wishes to comment for something not on the study session agenda will be afforded two minutes to do so this evening. Sherry, did you receive any comment cards for the study session for non-agenda items?
I did not.
Okay, and seeing no hands raised, that public comment is closed, and that will move us to our study session items. We have two this evening. Study session six point one is the Marketplace Redevelopment Project for parcels A, B, and F, and the Ad-Hoc Committee Recommendation Regarding the Marketplace Development Agreement. There is no staff presentation this evening as it is a presentation by the Vice Mayor and myself. Madam Vice Mayor, would you be acceptable to me making that presentation?
Please.
Okay. So, at the last study session on the public market, we received an overview of the public market's proposed redevelopment plans for specifically parcels A and B, in which they proposed providing an in-lu fee to the City Council in exchange for not having to construct the housing requirement that was proposed for the initial FDP approval for parcel A, and they had other overviews of other components to that project. The City Council authorized the Vice Mayor and I to work as an ad hoc committee to meet with the public market, City Center Realty and Oxford Properties, to have a discussion about what an acceptable recommendation might be to the City Council in exchange for relieving them from this component of the development agreement and requiring something perhaps in lieu of that. Attached to the staff, I'm sorry, attached to the agenda for this night's meeting as attachment A is an outline of terms that the Vice Mayor and I are recommending to the City Council for discussion this evening and for potential approval insofar as giving direction to staff, that these are terms that we would like to have the staff move forward with in negotiating with the public market. The public market is represented here this evening, and so after we have outlined what these terms and conditions are, I will afford members the opportunity to ask questions to the public market or to the Vice Mayor and I. We will accept public comment on those items, and then we will have discussion and give direction if appropriate. So in attachment A, there are three components to consideration that the Vice Mayor and I recommend would be required in order to make amendments to the development agreement for eighteen affordable housing units on public market parcel A. The first item is financial consideration. It is our position that the sum of not less than twenty million dollars should be remitted to the City of Emeryville's Housing Fund. That can be inclusive of the Affordable Housing Impact Fees, which, if calculated today, are just below two million dollars, so it'd be just over eighteen million dollars of additional funds beyond the Affordable Housing Impact Fee, that those funds would be earmarked for the development of new affordable housing anywhere in the City of Emeryville at the discretion of the City Council. The reason we left it open was that we did not, while we clearly prioritize and prefer that those be appropriated for use on the Christie sites, we did not want to put that in writing in an agreement if, for some reason, there was some unforeseen reason why the Christie sites could not be developed. For example, there was some sort of an environmental hazard that made them unusable, or some other type of unforeseen situation came up. We wanted to leave it open-ended in that respect, but we clearly wish to recommend as a non-development agreement condition that the council could continue the conversation among ourselves about prioritizing those funds for the Christie sites, as we wish to have this affordable housing adjacent to the public market as was intended. The way we've divided those funds is that any Affordable Housing Impact Fees are due at the time prescribed by the city. That is already prescribed in our code, so when you pay the Affordable Housing Impact Fee, that is, there's a specific time in which that has to be paid in the development process. We're not looking to change the timeline for those funds. The second pot of money would be additional ten million dollars, not inclusive of the prior Affordable Housing Impact Fees, that would be due on or before June thirtieth of next year. So we would receive roughly two million dollars using the current day estimation, plus ten million dollars, probably within the first year or so of this application being approved. And then the balance of that twenty million dollar sum, which excludes the payments outlined above, would be paid in equal installments annually for a period of three years, beginning in the following year of two thousand and twenty-four, until that full sum had been paid. Payment of those funds would be made not later than June thirtieth of each year, so within our fiscal year timeline, and the subsection of funds would be subject to a couple of exceptions. The first exception is that if a temporary certificate of occupancy is requested by Oxford at any point, so in other words, if they have moved to a stage of development where they are ready to begin occupying any of the new buildings, all of the funds would come due at that time. So in other words, we would get our funds not later than any point where they would begin occupying their building if their development moved along on that timeline. The other condition is that if, after June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and in the sole discretion of the City Council, we can make payment for, I'm sorry, make request for payment in full for any outstanding affordable housing funds due under the agreement if we need those funds to either leverage other matching funds or complete any pre-development work or remediation, or begin construction with such funding. So if we are at a stage in development of any housing project in the city, again, we would like to prioritize the Christie sites in this scenario, and we are at a place where, with the funds that are outstanding, we could begin a new phase of the developments project after June thirtieth of next year, we can simply, in writing, request those funds and outline what we would be using those funds for to advance the accelerated development of affordable housing on-site in the city, and that Oxford and CCRP would agree to remit those funds within thirty days of getting that written request from us. So that's the first condition. The second condition that we're proposing is letters of support as consideration. So essentially, by letting them out of the eighteen affordable housing construction requirement, we are losing the opportunity to have those units constructed alongside other market rate units. And so while we have anticipated and planned to build a hundred percent affordable on the Christie sites, even doing that, whether that was a mixed-income project or a one hundred percent affordable project, there is going to be a need to leverage and provide additional funding to make that project feasible. So in order to make that project feasible, we have monies allocated from the Measure C expenditure plan to help assist that project, but there will still be a gap that needs to be filled, and traditionally, we would put a project like this out for an RFP, an affordable housing developer would be selected potentially as a partner, and they would apply for tax credits and other types of housing finance. When those types of applications go in, it is important to have other letters of support for those competitive grant or competitive tax credit allocation applications, and what we want is a commitment that the public market will be a partner and will submit support for all such applications as requested, so that we have the best potential opportunity to leverage and bring in additional funds if necessary and as necessary to help make that project financially feasible. The third item here is the Marketplace Drive consideration. So one of the things we identified that was being given up by not including this on parcel A was that parcel A was adjacent to a pedestrian plaza, it was in front of stores and shops, and it had connectivity to the Amtrak station. So we were creating a high-quality location for low-income residents to reside within our city, and the Vice Mayor and I believe that residents in all levels of housing, of all economic strata, should have equitable access to all the same amenities in our community, and we believe that if we were to develop the Christie sites and we begin development on any of the Christie sites as outlined in three A, that Oxford and CCRP will agree to convert Market Drive into a pedestrianized plaza, removing the road as it is and removing the parking spaces on it, to allow for that to be a pedestrian space that is outdoor and open space, that will provide people in the affordable housing. We intend to build there with immediate connectivity to the Market Hall, create social and community gathering spaces that enhance the livability of the residents who would live in this affordable housing. And we have in these kind of longer paragraphs some conditions that reflect lease conditions that exist around the existing public market. So the commitment is to, that we would seek, is to have Sixty-Second Street at the north end going south down to the leased area of the Guitar Center. They have a loading dock where it's covered in their lease, so we would go down to that point being pedestrianized, and that when the Guitar Center's lease is not renewed or when it expires, the current lease expires, that they would continue that pedestrianization down to Fifty-Ninth Street, which is just before you get to the Tesla charging stations. So we would basically provide a full pedestrianized space that would be during regular business hours of ten A. M. to nine P. M. for the residents who live there, with that being open for deliveries in the evening hours, so that the Market Hall can receive deliveries for food and other things that will be necessary to make the Market Hall functional. So, Madam Vice Mayor, did I capture the recommendation, or did I miss anything that I need to state?
No, I think you captured the document really well. Thank you.
Okay. Members, before I invite questions for the public market, CCRP, or Oxford, do other members have questions for the Vice Mayor or I about our recommendation? Member Martinez?
Just wondering if you contemplated any extensions that might happen to the Guitar Center lease. I understand it expires in two thousand and twenty-seven.
Yeah, so the Guitar Center lease, I think that the challenge with that is that we don't want to be in a position of contractually infringing on the rights of the Public Market Hall and putting them in a place where we look like we're creating a conflict with a legal agreement, because it is a right to extend. So no new lease could be signed, no new extension could be signed under what we're proposing, but what we're doing is recognizing an existing leasehold agreement they have and not interfering with a business contract.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome. Member Welch?
Would there be any penalties for the installments if they are paid late?
They would be in violation of the agreement, and so arguably, we could conclude a provision that says if a payment is not made on time, all the sums are due and owing immediately, if you would like that. If a payment is not made on time, that we could say that all sums are considered due and owing immediately. I'd be happy to let you ask the applicant if they would agree to that as well.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for the Vice Mayor or I? Madam Vice Mayor, did you have a comment? No, you're good. Okay. Sherry, may I ask if you would promote Mark Steffen, and then if he has anybody else he wishes to promote alongside him, we can do that. Mark, did you have anybody you'd like to have join you up here for questioning?
Also Lauren Kraus, if we could promote her as well?
Oh, there she is. I didn't see her, sorry. Okay, so Lauren, there you go. So Mark is with City Center Realty Partners, and Lauren is with Oxford Properties, and members, I'll begin with Member Welch's last question for Mark or Lauren. I'll let you decide who answers. Is there any opposition or objection to the request that if a payment in the part three of the balance installment payments, as Member Welch asked, not paid on time, that all sums would become due and owing?
All right, Lauren. Yeah. Yep, yes.
Apologies. Thanks, Mark. Yes, Councilmember Welch and Mayor Bauders, we would be happy to make that a condition.
Okay. Members, are there any other questions that you would like to ask the applicant? No? Okay, if you guys will just both stay here, we'll call for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on this agenda item and study session, which is in the scope of the development agreement as it relates to housing and lufis, will be afforded three minutes to speak. You can use the raise hand feature on Zoom, or you can press star nine if you'd like to ask a question or make a comment related to this item. Sherry, did we receive any online written comment cards related to item six point one?
We did not.
Did we lose Sherry?
No comment cards.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and seeing no hands raised, public comment for this item is closed. Members, before I excuse our partners, I will just ask one last time, do you have any following questions for them? Member Martinez?
Just wondering if there's any news to deliver on parcel F at this time.
I'm sorry, could you ask that question again?
Just wondering if there's anything that you'd like to inform the council regarding parcel F at this time.
No, I think that Mayor Bauder did a great job of presenting our position on it. It's, we're really excited about this new plan, because we think the housing is better suited on the Christie Street sites, if we can make that happen. It's a bigger community, and we think that our dollars would go a lot farther. The price that we were budgeting to build the Christie Street parcels was about six hundred thousand dollars a unit for eighteen units, and so we can, with that same dollar amount, what we're now offering, would provide thirty units, and we think that parcel F is not a very cost-effective site, getting the small size, so we think you'd be able to get more units than the thirty we're talking about if you build it in a more typical size or larger project.
The one other thing that I would add is that we did hear that it would be favorable if we engaged with CA Ventures to talk with them potentially about selling that parcel, which we are in, we're preparing to do, so we haven't had those conversations yet, but we will be having those conversations as requests.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Okay, with no questions, before we have discussion, I'll just ask if Mark or Lauren would like to say anything else about the recommendation that the Vice Mayor and I are making to the council this evening.
You know, I think we're very positive about it, and we like the idea about converting Market Drive to a pedestrian experience during the day and evening. I think it'll be a big support for not just the public market and the patrons, but also for the new residents, so we're very much in support, and I think it's a win-win for both the community and us.
And just, I wanted to extend my appreciation, being new to the project, the welcome by the city, and also just the excitement that the project is moving forward, and I echo everything that Mark said about Market Drive, and thank the mayor and vice mayor for their raising that as something that would be beneficial to the community, which we're happy to do.
And thank you. Sherry, we'll move both of them back to the audience at this time, please, and members, I will, just before we go into further discussion, I'll just add, as Member Martinez asked about parcel F, the Vice Mayor and I did note that we wanted to maximize the use of the entire FDP, and we've had just requests at a high level, just that people remain engaged with one another and have ongoing conversations about how we can maximize the opportunity for housing generally. That was the goal that we had as the ad hoc committee, was to talk about the housing opportunity, and we believe that this is a significant financial investment. We would not give up housing opportunities quickly, but we believe that the commitment and the time periods for paying the money, essentially being required to make over half the payments most likely within the first year from now, put us in a position to move forward with the housing regardless of what the public market's timeline becomes. So that, we felt that that was a significant piece of consideration, and that, as was noted, the other obligations to work with us to support the housing development in proximity to the public market to ultimately deliver the vision that the community has for itself, inclusive of people of all incomes, was a good one. So I want to thank Mark and Lauren for meeting in good faith with the Vice Mayor and I on several occasions to have these conversations. I want to thank Member Welch for her recommendation to include, and I don't want to lose it tonight, to include a term that says if a payment is not made on time, that all payments come due, and I would just now, at this point, invite members who wish to speak to just raise your hand, and I'll recognize you for the opportunity to discuss your opinion. Member Martinez?
I think this is a really thoughtful proposal, and I'm glad that Oxford and CCRP is meeting with CA Ventures at the adjacent property, because I think that will allow us to maximize development in that area, and I think that's a really good thing. I really appreciate the developers putting their heads together for that small amount of space, and I just want to thank the ad hoc committee for making these recommendations. I am in support.
Thank you, others. Member Donahue?
Yeah, I think you've cut a deal that everyone can live with, that benefits all parties, and that is positive, and I think we should move forward.
Member Welch?
Now, I expressed in our last meeting that I'm not a big fan of in-lufis, but this is a plan that I feel very comfortable with, and I appreciate you and Vice Mayor Medina really working together with the developers to come up with something that doesn't feel like a loss, and so I'm also very comfortable with this. I feel like this is something that's still beneficial, that can be utilized to make sure that we're not missing out on housing opportunities, so I'm also in support.
I see a head nod from Vice Mayor Medina, so I'm gonna take that as, she's been on this ride for a while, so I have nothing else to add. I've outlined our proposed recommendations, and I support it, and I thank all of you for leaning in. This is, I agree with Member Welch a lot, that I don't generally support in-lufis, and I think that those are usually trade-offs that are not acceptable to housing construction obligations, but this is a significant financial investment, and it has got other conditions of consideration that make sure we do not diminish or remove other things that were expected or anticipated for below-market-rate housing occupants in terms of livability and community engagement. There's other components here that I think are worthwhile, and I appreciate the applicant for leaning in and working with us very closely on those discussions. So, staff, you've heard agreement here from, I think, all five members, and with the addition of Member Welch's suggestion, is there any additional information you'd like, or any questions you'd like to ask us before we conclude this item? City Manager Daniel?
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask Sherry to promote both Mr. Bryant and Mr. Smalley. It was Mr. Smalley and I who were working on this earlier, just to check in and make sure if they have any clarifying questions.
All right. Mr. Bryant, Mr. Smalley, do you have any questions for council?
I don't have any questions. I think this sounds like a good deal for both the city and the applicant. I would note, just on a technical point, that parcel F is part of the Marketplace PUD, and the amendment to the PUD that's being proposed would move the obligation to build the ten townhouse units on parcel A over to parcel F, so regardless of who owns parcel F, it would still be part of the PUD, and it would still have that obligation for ten townhouse units. But as long as CA Ventures understands that, I'd be in support of them negotiating a sale there as well. I realize that's not part of the deal tonight, but I would be supportive of that.
Your point is a very well-made point. Mr. Bryant, putting it on the record is welcome, as that was the Vice Mayor and my thought process as well. We understand that amendment includes keeping those housing units, that housing accountability does not allow us to simply eliminate housing that has been approved, and so we understand that those are private negotiations with which the City Council is not a party to, but they remain an obligation to whoever owns parcel F. But we have another study session item coming up briefly, and perhaps there will be input and feedback that will help further educate the parties on the City Council's views around that issue. Thank you for your comment, though. Mr. Smalley, did you have anything you'd like to add or ask?
No additional questions from me. It's pretty clear. Thank you to the subcommittee and the City Council for putting this together.
Very welcome.
So, Mr. Mayor, our next steps will be to draft a development agreement amendment that reflects the terms that the council has discussed tonight, and that would be brought back after a recommendation by the Planning Commission. Development Agreement Amendment is an ordinance, so it does require a first and second reading. So thank you so much to the committee and the council for this feedback.
Very welcome. Okay, with that, we will conclude item six point one. Let me go back to my agenda. Item six point two is a study session on fifty-eight fifty Shellmount Life Science Tower, located at fifty-eight fifty Shellmount Way within the City of Emeryville. This is our first study session on this item, I believe.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Mira Desai will be making the presentation on this item this evening for staff.
Great, thank you, and good evening, Mira.
Good evening, Mayor Bauders, council members. I'm Mira Desai, senior planner, and I will be joined by Chad Smalley to give this presentation. So this is a new development proposal of fifty-eight fifty Shellmount. Next slide, please. So it's about an acre and a half site. There's an existing sixty-one thousand square foot building which would be demolished to accommodate the proposal. Next slide, please. The proposal has gone through the Planning Commission three times, the GPAC has also reviewed it, and the applicant has conducted a community meeting. Next slide, please. And the proposal that is in front of you today is a life science tower which accommodates a little under four hundred thousand square feet of life science space. In addition, there is a twenty-three hundred square foot ground floor retail or amenity space. In addition, there are six townhomes units. They're about fifteen hundred square feet, and they will all are proposed to be BMR units, four at very low level, very low income level, and two at low income levels. The proposal also includes a bicycle and pedestrian path north along the northern property line, and I'll be speaking a little bit more about that in a bit. The circulation and the parking is access on Christie Avenue, and the lobby faces Christie Avenue, as you can see in this graphic. Next slide, please. So this is a fourteen-story, two hundred and forty-feet building. It accommodates six levels of parking and four hundred and nine parking spaces, and you can kind of see how the two-story residential- And you can kind of see how the two-story residential units are a separate building from this. And, and the life science building is cantilevered over it. Next slide, please. This is the elevation along the bicycle pedestrian path. And you can see the townhomes fronting that with the life science building behind it. The applicant will be showing some more graphics, so I will, I will end here in terms of the graphic presentation. Next slide, please. So this project requires a general plan amendment. And that is the reason why the project requires the council approval upon recommendation of the planning commission. What you are looking at is a portion of the general plan land use diagram. As you can see, the Shellmount Way that is being shown in this land use diagram is 250 feet north of its existing configuration. So what happened was that in 2007, prior to the adoption of the general plan, a traffic analysis was conducted for this powerful Christie area, which recommended that the Shellmount Way be relocated to about 250 feet north of its current location in order to improve the circulation in the area as well as create a larger development parcel south of Shellmount Way. So when the general plan was adopted in 2009, it included this relocation of Shellmount Way. Fast forward eight years, between 2017 and 2018, the planning commission held three study sessions on a residential proposal at this site and recommended amending the general plan to modify the location of Shellmount Way such that it is consistent with its existing configuration. In addition, the BPA in March 28, 2018, recommended that along with the general plan amendment, it include an east-west pedestrian bicycle path in the approximate location where the general plan shows the relocated Shellmount Way. The council at that time concurred with the BPA recommendation and gave direction that this GPA or the general plan amendment should include the addition of a bicycle pedestrian path along the northern portion of the property with the idea that 10 feet would be provided by the site and 10 feet would come from the city-owned adjacent property. So accordingly, staff advised the current applicant of this project to include this general plan amendment and provide that 10 feet to accommodate this new pedestrian bicycle path. Next slide, please. So the zoning here is MUR and there's a transit hub overlay zone in this zoning district. Research and development is, is allowed with a conditional use permit and residential is allowed by right. Next slide, please. So the mix of uses, as I mentioned, the parcel size is about 1.5 acres. And any parcel that is between 1 and 5 acres, a mix of uses is required where one use must be residential. The regulations do not specify the proportion of the mix between residential and non-residential users. And it is up to the discretion of the commission slash council to determine whether the proposal qualifies as mixed use. Next slide, please. So the, the project needs bonus points for, 100 bonus points for both FAR and height. Next slide, please. So the bonus points for non-residential projects, the applicant will need to obtain half of them by paying additional affordable housing impact fee. And this calculates to about $3.75 million if the building permit was issued today. The remaining 50 bonus points would be on to community benefits. The applicant has not yet precisely identified how will they obtain the remaining 50 bonus points, but has suggested indicating providing additional public open space and public improvements. Next slide, please. So in terms of parking, their range in terms, in the range that we need to provide is between no parking to 416. They're providing 409 and, and therefore complying with the city's regulations. Bicycle parking that is triggered is 76 short-term and 76 long-term. And they do show a long-term bicycle parking room on the ground floor, but the spaces is not indicated and the short-term bike parking is not yet shown at this preliminary stage. Next slide, please. So the planning commission's comments in August of last year, the three, there were three public comments from the residents of Christie Commons and PPP who raised concerns regarding proposals' height, increased traffic, wind impacts, and need to provide amenities that would benefit the community. They also questioned the explanation of why housing was not possible at this site. The commissions, commissioners were not opposed to the life science tower and offered a number of suggestions, including adding retail and/or community-oriented ground floor active users and also providing the neighborhood's residents with amenities that they could enjoy. However, the commission did express skepticism as the applicant's claim that the residential use was infeasible at the site and directed the applicant to provide a comprehensive analysis. In response, the applicant provided an analysis and that was peer-reviewed by the city's consultant Economic and Planning Systems. Next slide, please. At this point, I will hand this presentation over to Chad to go over the housing feasibility analysis.
Thank you, Miru. Mayor and council members, this is Chad Smalley, the Economic Development Housing Manager. And as Miru mentioned, we retained the services of Economic and Planning Systems, or EPS, to provide a peer review of the analysis that the applicant prepared to support their claim that residential was infeasible at the site. Their analysis that they submitted provided an overview of the multifamily residential market and compared it to the regional market trends. And then ran through a feasibility analysis for a 244, uh, unit mixed-use project that they called their base case. And that is the, the project, the residential-driven project that was previously proposed on this site. They also ran some alternative cases where they showed reduced affordability and also removal of fees, just by way of demonstrating that, that it was, it would still be difficult even if some of these requirements were theoretically relaxed. And so, as I mentioned, all three cases they demonstrated were infeasible because the return on cost of building those projects would range between 4 and 3/4 and a little over 5%. And they alleged that near 6% was required in order for lenders to be interested in, in financing the project. Next slide, please. So EPS did a peer review where they, they went through each of the assumptions underpinning the applicant's analysis. And the key findings that EPS arrived at were that, you know, a vertical mix of life science and residential is likely infeasible in the sense that there's a lot of rooftop equipment required for biotech uses and a lot of considerations about how the building flows, providing security and just generally financing and managing the project. The applicant's analysis of the 244-unit project, which they deemed infeasible, was underpinned by reasonable assumptions. They had assumed that rents would be 15% above the current market rents, which is reasonable for a brand-new building that was well-amenitized as proposed. The construction costs that they had, EPS felt was possibly a bit optimistic, where EPS felt that the construction costs would be likely to approach 113 million and the analysis provided by applicant was at 99 million. The land costs assumed in the pro forma were reasonable at about 14.8 million per acre. Recent transactions in Emeryville for similarly zoned properties ranged between 11.3 and 28.4 million an acre. And the investor requirements can be as low as 5% if adjusted for inflation, real returns on cost. And the base case doesn't meet that 5% threshold until the fourth year of operation. So the conclusion is that a significant market shift would be required to make that 244-unit project workable. Next slide, please. There are some qualifications to that analysis. We, you know, we did not test a less-dense residential product type. We presume that based on the fact that the 244 units was proposed previously, that that was maximizing the residential utility of the site. But we do not know if a less-dense product, townhomes or a shorter tower, potentially would pencil differently. We did some sensitivity testing, or EPS did, to understand what would happen if some of these assumptions were relaxed. If you increased the rents by 15%, which would be 30% over current market, then the project becomes feasible. If you, by way of example, if the rents were 10% over the estimated rents, which would be 25% over current market, and you took out the construction contingency and the land cost came down to 19 million versus the 22, I believe that was, that's proposed, then it's also potentially feasible. So you can see how different factors converge to make the, the base case project infeasible. The cost and rent factors are regional and this analysis is for a single site. So all this analysis says is that that project is infeasible today for that specific kind of project. We did note that there has been a slowdown in multifamily project starts in the East Bay region. And those stats are noted there. And of the projects that have been put forward recently, a lot of them are 100% affordable projects, which have different capital requirements. And because they're largely funded by tax credits. And so they're less sensitive to the investor demands that are out there in the marketplace. Next slide, please. And so that, that was the conclusion of the, the peer review. So the planning commission then, we presented the same analysis to the planning commission on April 28. And, uh, I'm sorry, the prior study. And the applicant has come back with the project that Miru just gave you. They commissioned comments at, on April 28th on that application. They appreciated the inclusion of the six townhomes and felt that that proposed mix of uses was acceptable, but did encourage the applicant to explore the possibility of adding a few more residential units. Some commissioners, several opined that the applicant should consider reducing the massing along Christie Avenue by shifting the tower towards the east portion of the site and away from Christie as well. And that reflected some of the public comments that were received during that study session. Next slide, please. So of the issues to be considered, staff is requesting the, the council provide some feedback on the mix of uses. This project's primarily, obviously, research and development building with six townhomes, all six of which are below, proposed to be below-market rate. And we'd like to know what the council's feelings are about this mix of uses for this site. Regarding bonus points, we'd like to hear if the council has any suggestions as to the type of community benefits that the project should obtain to obtain the 50 bonus points, aside from the affordable housing fee that's required by the code. And then finally, any other comments on the preliminary design as proposed? Next slide. And that concludes our presentation, I believe.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much for that very comprehensive presentation. Is there an applicant presentation, Miru?
Yes, there is. And they have been instructed to keep it brief and no more than 20 minutes.
Okay. In the future, so that we're on the record, all applicant presentations should be less than 10 minutes. And if the applicant is hearing this live and can make that in less than 10 minutes, I would appreciate that. And I'd ask you not to duplicate anything staff has already presented. Welcome and go ahead.
Certainly. Thank you, uh, thank you, Miru and Chad for that presentation. And good evening to the council members and mayor Bauders. I'll be happy to let you know that Miru actually previously did tell us we only had 10 minutes. So we'll be keeping this to 10 minutes and keeping it short and sweet. Let me introduce myself. My name is Mike Lee. I'm a senior vice president at CA Ventures. I'm joined this evening by Jesse Ostra, who is the CIO of CA Health and Science Trust, as well as our lead project architect from SCB, Mike Keel. We're excited to be back, well, for the first time in front of the city council to discuss our proposed project with you this evening. Next slide, please. I'll keep this brief and skip over this a little bit since this covers a lot of the history of the, the transaction, which Miru and Chad have just done a good job summarizing. But ultimately, we, you know, we have been working on this site for quite some time now, almost a year now in its current capacity as a life science project. And, you know, we're excited about our goal to deliver 300,000 net square feet of rentable life science space along with the affordable two-bed townhouses, ground floor, amenity space, parking structure, and really general site improvements to 5850 Shellmount in that corner of Shellmount and, and Christie Ave. Chad and Miru have correctly highlighted the previous conversations and requests from the planning commission. And so this evening, since this is the first introduction in a formal setting to the project for the city council members, we'd like to outline the consideration that was given to each of the different possible placements for the residential townhouses within the base of the building and ultimately help the city council understand the feasibility around the number and the location of those townhouse units within our proposed project. Next slide, please. Sorry, next slide after that. So to start, what I'd like to do is sort of walk around the project for each, you know, location on the compass rose to help the city council understand why we ultimately settled on placing the townhouse units along the north of the property line adjacent to the bike lane. And so at first, I'd like to start on the eastern edge of the property. And, you know, from a beneficial standpoint, if we were to provide the residential units along this location, it would have the closest proximity to the public market. However, as has been highlighted earlier today or earlier this evening, we do not control the adjacent parcel next to us, which is parcel F. And so any future potential developments on that parcel could negatively impact the residential units and, and quote-unquote, box them in potentially. It would also require the relocation of key building infrastructure in the site plan to other less ideal locations, primarily along the bike path, which would ultimately fail to activate the bike lane, which is one of our goals as this, as part of this project. Next slide, please. We considered the southern property line as well along Shellmount. This would provide the units with the most natural daylight, given the south-facing aspect. However, the intersection is not residential-friendly due to the traffic circulation both day and night with potential for light to spill into the units from turning vehicles as well as just general noise. And similar to the eastern edge analysis, the building infrastructure, which we've placed along the southern portion of the building, would need to be, again, relocated to the northern part, which would fail to activate the bike lane. Next slide, please. Christie could have been a good location, serving as a continuation of the residential corridor that currently exists and will be further expanded if the developments on the city-owned sites go ahead just north of us as well as the recently proposed development of the Christie Avenue site across the street from us with the proposed life science and residential projects. However, the placement of these townhouses along Christie would also require the relocation of the lobby and vehicular access to Shellmount Way. Placing both of these along Shellmount has been advised against by both city staff as well as the fire marshal due to the traffic that is currently circulating on Shellmount and having ingress and egress from the parking structure on an already busy street. Additionally, we wouldn't be able to have any curb cuts for the lobby or any curb cuts for the lobby would have to be placed along Christie, quite some distance from the actual lobby entrance itself. Next slide, please. So ultimately, this has led us to conclude that the northern part of the building base was the best location for the townhouses. Locating the units here would help to activate the bike lane and create community, uh, create continuity with the eventual development of the city-owned site just north of 5850. Furthermore, residents would be walking out onto, onto a presentable and landscaped public space rather than the intersection of, of Shellmount and Christie, which we believe is a far more residential-friendly and presentable housing option for the potential residential tenants. However, the unfortunate, one downside to locating the townhouses along this property line, though, is that this is the narrowest property line of our site. And therefore, that limits the number of units that could ultimately be developed into the base of the building, which I'll come on to in just a second. Next slide, please. And the next one, thank you. So this arrives at our updated site plan, which Miru has previously shown. And I'd like to take a moment here to highlight a few aspects of this site plan. So I'd like to draw initial attention just to the north of the property where the affordable townhouse units are being contemplated. You'll see that these, the Um, you'll see that these, uh, these units are, you will see from this slide, but you'll see from a subsequent slide, uh, to follow, these are, units are anticipated to be structurally separate from the life science commercial uses, uh, not only for, uh, security concerns, but also for, um, just the benefit of the, of the residents from a, uh, fire and safety perspective as well. Um, as I mentioned, this is the shortest property line on our site. And so the proposed units as drawn up here would be about twenty-five feet in width, which allows for two bedrooms on the second floor and for both of those bedrooms to have enough width to have windows and therefore natural light into those living spaces. Um, because, uh, we want to add those two bedrooms on the second floor and have no interior, uh, bedrooms, which we aren't allowed to have, um, twenty-five feet is really the, the minimum width that we were comfortable providing. Um, and so six units of twenty-five feet in width together is a hundred and fifty feet in width for all six townhouse units. And as you'll see, that already, uh, you know, our property line there is, is not, is I think about a hundred and seventy-five feet in total width. And so, um, it's really not possible to add any additional, uh, units along that northern aspect, um, nor is it really possible to add any other additional units in any other aspect of the site plan without beginning to materially take away, uh, from necessary back-of-house spaces and therefore impacting the overall feasibility of, of the project as, as a whole. Um, I would like to say, though, that the proposed townhouse units as drawn up would be about fifteen hundred square feet in total size for each of them. So they are relatively, uh, good-sized townhouses. Uh, however, we have, uh, looked at it briefly and, and slight adjustments to, uh, the width of the townhouses, uh, does not allow for the inclusion of additional, uh, an additional unit or two to either the east or west of the, uh, proposed units. Um, one other thing I'd like to draw attention to, uh, on the, you know, on the, on the site plan is the, the location of the lobby, uh, along Christie Ave and where the location of the curb cut is and the e-ingress egress to the, uh, the parking structure along Christie. These are all placed here, as I previously mentioned, to limit, uh, or to sensibly place these off of Shellmount. Um, one other point to note is the bike parking, which was previously in prior iterations shown along, uh, Shellmount, furthest away from the bike lane itself, has now been relocated to the eastern side of the building and would be, would provide access directly to the bike lane via a landscaped path running along the property line to, uh, to the east, both to the bike lane, as well as continuing down towards, uh, Shellmount Way to make that better connected to, uh, to the, to the ultimate bike lane. Next slide, please. Um, here you'll just see a, a quick, uh, snapshot of the upper floor plans, um, to sort of illustrate how we position the tower to, to screen the parking structure from Christie and to capture views in natural daylight at the lower levels, um, taking advantage of the, the curving nature of the site to create kind of a softer, more dynamic form on the, on the city skyline. Next slide, please. This is a, uh, view of the prod, property from the north looking south. And you can see the townhouses that are located at the base of the building. Next slide, please. Uh, and on this slide, you can see how the townhouses are, uh, structurally separate from the tower and ultimately, uh, nested underneath the, uh, envelope of the tower. Next slide, please. These are just a couple, uh, design precedents for townhouses, um, which are sort of meant to, meant to really show that there's a lot of, uh, design attributes that we can call upon here to, uh, to, to make these townhouses fit well within the Emeryville Design Guidelines and blend naturally with not only the surrounding area, but also with the, ultimately with the, the tower above it. Next slide, please. Uh, so in conclusion, um, we'd like to request response and comments from the council on our proposal. Um, A, as we've demonstrated, a primary residential project is not feasible on the site. And we believe we've convincingly demonstrated that over the course of previous planning commission meetings. Uh, we want to continue and we look forward to continue working with the stakeholders in the city of Emeryville, uh, to redevelop and to improve what we believe is a severely underutilized site in the downtown core of Emeryville. And so with that going in mind, um, we hope that this proposed mix of uses and the inclusion of townhouse units as requested by the planning commission previously, uh, it can be viewed as an acceptable mix of uses and hopefully confirmed, uh, during this study session in order to allow us to progress with more detailed levels of, of design review and, and going back to planning commission. Um, thank you again for your time and thoughtful consideration this evening, and we welcome uh, any and all comments and questions you may have.
Thank you, Mike, and I commend, or I congratulate you on completing that within ten minutes. I appreciate you doing that. Um, we like to keep, keep the council members and staff on their toes. So, um, with that, members, before I call for public comment, are there any clarifying questions only, please, no comments at this time, about the applicant's proposal? Okay, I see no hands. So what we'll do now is call for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on the proposed, uh, site at fifty-eight, fifty, this is a study session item, there are no actions being taken tonight. Uh, members of the public who wish to speak can raise their hand. There'll be afforded three minutes to speak. You can press star nine if you're joining us by phone. Before I call on the hands that are raised, Sheri, did we receive any written comments for this item?
We do, uh, Mr. Mayor, we have two written comments on this item.
Okay. And did the, those who've made the comments wish to have the opportunity to speak live? Should I call them first if they're here?
I don't see either of them here. One I know particularly said he would not be in attendance and the other one I don't see listed among our attendees.
Okay. So those comments will be read first and then we'll take live comments. Would you please go ahead and read the first comment and state the name of the person if they gave their name? Thank you.
All right. This comment is from Lisa Findley. I comment as an Emeryville homeowner, a resident within two hundred feet of the site and as a professor of architecture. The project as proposed would be a mistake for Emeryville and for our neighborhood in particular. One, height FAR. The developers of this huge tower are using low-hanging fruit strategies for exceeding the zoning height limit of one hundred by over a hundred and fifty feet. Please require real benefits for all of us from this project and consider reducing the height. It should not be so easy to gain FAR. Two, relationship to sidewalk street. The proposed project would loom as a wall immediately next to the sidewalk, making for an unpleasant and for Emeryville unprecedented hyper-urban edge. An alternative massing that flips the massing, putting the low mass of the parking on Christie and the tower, has been proposed by a resident who is an architect. This architect has provided also a sketch plan of how the entry and lobby can remain on Christie with this alternative massing. Three, street neighborhood. The proposed exceedingly tall tower to the south-southeast of the street would impinge on the Green Street identity of Christie Avenue in several ways. It will generate significant traffic and congestion along the street, cast shadows over the street and the Christie Avenue Park, especially during winter months, and it is quite simply out of scale with the street. Four, traffic congestion. Residents have commented repeatedly at planning commission meetings about the negative impacts of this project in terms of traffic and congestion in an already very busy location in the city. The location of the driveway for parking lot and loading dock is on a curve and at a pinch point. No mitigation or design proposals have been made to respond to these concerns to date. Five, mix of uses. The six townhouses proposed by the developer to respond to the zoning requirement for housing on the site are impoverished by their placement and will receive little to no daylight. The developer paints a charming picture of a community along a bike path, cities, other projects in Emeryville as precedent, but no, excuse me, cites other projects in Emeryville as precedent. But none of these projects tuck townhouses under the nor- northern edge of a two-hundred-and-sixty-foot tall tower. The tower will block all light, even bounce sunlight from reaching the units. They can do better. Six, biotech buzz. Finally, there are a lot of biotech development, there is a lot of biotech development in Emeryville. And numerous projects already approved and underway. Just a couple of years ago, pre-pandemic, the buzz and financial backing were about housing. I urge the council to heed the zoning and require more balanced mix of uses on this site. And comment number two, received from Rod Henme. Good evening to the city council. I am Rod Henme, Christie Avenue resident and design director for HKIT Architects, a leading affordable housing firm. I am writing to recommend a change to the proposed scheme that I believe will result in a better urban design, more pedestrian-friendly, friendly Christie Avenue and overall more successful project. I have emailed drawings of this scheme to you all and to planning staff, so hopefully you have seen this alternative and are familiar with its visual impacts. I've also included a copy of the drawings with this testimony. Perhaps the three sheets can be shown online. I am proposing that the low parking mass of seventy-six feet be oriented towards Christie Avenue rather than the back of the site. This mitigates the impact of the two-hundred-and-sixty-five-foot tower by stepping the mass down towards Christie, which is a key residential pedestrian supportive street. The drawings showing this alternative are based on keeping the tower and the parking mass approximately the same area, so the schemes are comparable. A west-facing roof deck will require a full-height glass windscreen, but gains the advantage of midday and afternoon sunlight and tremendous views of the bay. It will also provide visual relief to the street. Walking towards the project will be very interesting for Christie Avenue pedestrians to be able to see people and activity on a roof deck overlooking the street. This feature will enhance the pedestrian experience rather than having the sheer unmitigated two-hundred-and-sixty-five-foot high mass right at the edge of the street. I've also included the draw, in the drawing package, a possible alternat- alternative first-floor plan that keeps the drop-off and lobby entrance on Christie, which the applicant prefers. I'm sure the design and development team can improve on this plan while keeping the low mass to the front. There was substantial support from the planning commission for the recommendation to place the low mass towards Christie and preserve the low-scale pedestrian character of the street, including from Chair Keller. I respectfully ask that the city council make a specific recommendation to the applicant, that the massing should be revised and the low mass placed towards Christie Avenue. Finally, I encourage the council to recommend a lower height to the building to bring it more into scale with the surrounding neighborhood. Admittedly, a tall tower is required for, required for financial feasibility, but a slight reduction is usually possible and even expected by developers. I suggest a reduction in height of fifty feet. Thank you for considering my suggestions.
And that concludes the written comments we've received. Now I'll call for oral comment. There'll be three minutes to speak, as was done for the written comments. First person authorized to speak is Brian Donahue. Good evening.
Hello. I noticed in the staff report, uh, there was no, uh, informed, there was no, uh, discussion of how this project, uh, would impact our parks in Emeryville. And we know by our general plan that for every thousand new residents, we need three acres of new parkland. And for every thousand new workers, we need a quarter acre of new parkland. I think that I've, now I'm, now I'm getting hazy. I'm pretty sure that's the formula. And there wasn't, but the point I'm trying to make is that there was no discussion of this in the staff report. So the five of you don't know how this project would impact our parks? And would the project take us backwards in terms of providing the number of acres of parks that we need by the sunset of the general plan in approximately ten years? We know that we're way, way behind our, what we need, where we need to be. And as a matter of fact, we're gonna have to add, uh, almost fifty acres, forty-nine and a half acres by the sunset of the plan. We're way behind. The park fee for, for development projects, we know is, uh, very anemic and weak and does not, does not provide enough money to make enough parks to even closely get us to our, uh, requirement, where we're mandated requirement. So we know that we have to, uh, dicker with developers, uh, beyond the, the meager park fees. But the five of you are just working in the dark here. You have no idea because the staff didn't present the, this number to you, these numbers. So I'm proposing that from now on and including this project, the staff start providing the council members and presumably also the planning commission, decision-makers, the information about how, uh, each project before it would, uh, net, uh, im- impact our park requirements. And so it's, uh, just like I did for the, the staff before was keeping the decision-makers in the dark about the, uh, uh, what is it called? The developer, developed, uh, let me not go off that sidetrack. I'm sorry, because I can't remember the name. But, uh, I request that you ask the staff, before you vote here tonight, how this development project would affect, uh, the park, uh, spaces, park acreage in Emeryville. And then I also think you should tell the staff to start including that in each packet, that information, so you can better and make a better decision about projects in the future. See, it's not too late to start with this project. So that's what I request you do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public who wish to comment for this study session item six point two? Seeing none, public comment is now closed and we will turn to members for discussion. Who would like to begin with comments or questions? Member Martinez, you're recognized.
I'm just wondering, um, uh, if the developer is open to new ideas about, um, formatting the housing space in the event that parcel F becomes available to them for purchase?
I, I'd, I'd say we're open to it. I think the one thing I'd like to just remind the, the council, and I'm sure everyone is readily apparent of it, is we don't control parcel F. And so, um, obviously, anything we agree to, uh, with this project can't, we would request would not be contingent on the inclusion of anything from parcel F.
Okay. Member Donahue?
Uh, when I looked at this project, the discussion idea of flipping the mass from what is here west over to the east, I thought, yeah, that would perhaps make a lot of sense. Uh, however, in light of the deal that we seemingly just cut with the previous, uh, project, this new public space of, I guess it's called Market Street or Market Way there behind the public market on the west side, would be blocked by flipping the mass. And a view from what will likely be a highly-used public space, uh, looking to the south would be really a wall. And so I'm leaning towards the, what the, the proposed location of the mass being where they have said, partly because, in effect, this site is a pedestrian peninsula. And there's not gonna be a lot of pedestrians coming down the path, pass to the end of the peninsula and this very busy Shellmount Way. And, uh, the openness on the east side of keeping the, their massing might really benefit the public better, uh, when viewed from the, the park to the north and that new public open space that looks like we're going to get. So, uh, those are my comments.
Thank you. Other members? No comments? Member Welch?
It's echoing, I'm, I am disappointed about the housing portion being cut so low. And, um, echoing member Martinez's point about potentially being open or hoping the developer would be open to restrategizing around the amount of housing if parcel F became available. Um, and I'm happy to hear that they are, but I understand part of that isn't under their control. But I'm really hoping that we can have a stronger discussion, have a, have a deeper discussion about how to include more housing, because going down from, I mean, triple digits to six, for me, it's just, I'm, I'm not feeling it. I'm not feeling it. And I'm sorry, but it's just, for me, it's just too low. It's just far too low. And I understand it's going to be, you know, one hundred percent affordable, very low and low, but just six, it's, that's tough for me. It really is. I've gotta be honest.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor, do you wish to say anything at this time?
And to be honest, I'm surprised to see this, this proposal move forward as is. I understand that you got pushback at planning commission to include housing. And so throwing six housing units in, in a way that honestly looks like a design that sends, just shoving them into the side of a parking garage. Uh, I had sort of assumed it was gonna be a bargaining chip for you to come to us with a negotiating piece later on, and that, that piece is just not materialized. So really curious what the plan is, because honestly, this doesn't look like something that's actually gonna get built, to be entirely serious. This looks, you know, a little, little odd to have six townhouses shoved into the side. Um, and so I, I'm curious if this is a serious proposal, if this is what's intended to be built. Uh, and if so, how we're gonna make this community benefits adequate for the space and to make sure that those are gonna be like really nice and livable townhomes if that is the proposal that moves forward, have adequate light and adequate access to outdoor space. Also, one thing I spoke about- Also, one thing I spoke about with the applicant, which I haven't seen any improvements on, is the need for, at the very least, protected intersection where you see that bike lane come out onto Shellmount, onto Christie. I'm just not seeing how that bike facility fully connects, and I think that's something we could discuss in terms of community benefits.
Okay. So I'll give my initial feedback, and then I'll go ask, I'll ask Sheri in a moment. Sheri, I'm going to ask you to queue up the questions staff asked us to provide input on related to bonus points and a couple other items. My initial feedback is that the project, I understand that there were some financing-related items between 20, I guess, 18 and 2020, when this was proposed, and I met with the property owner and others about this being a potential 100% housing site. The amount of housing proposed in this project is too low and is not inconsistent, is inconsistent, in my opinion, with the vision of the general plan for this neighborhood. I would also note that what's being requested is a general plan amendment to relocate Shellmount Way, but all the prior study sessions about that relocation contemplated this site being a housing site. And that was done with the vision that it would be moved to allow this site to be a larger housing site, because the alternative is to keep Shellmount Way in the general plan closer to the south end of the Public Market Hall, so that the site adjacent to the Powell Street Bridge would be large enough to do something to be developable, developable at a larger scale. So if we're going to make an amendment to move Shellmount Way, I still believe that what that does is that minimizes, what I'm hearing, the opportunity to put housing on either site. So to me, it wouldn't be consistent with the city's general plan to move that road to essentially undermine the opportunity to put housing on either site. If the feasibility study is actually saying with the road moved, we can't build housing, it doesn't pencil out, then, as was noted, you're not in control of any of the surrounding parcels around you, but that is also not the city's problem. The city has a vision for itself that includes mixed use with residential, and I would echo the comments of other people before me, that I think six units is significantly deficient in terms of delivering on the promise for mixed use on the site. And I think that there needs to be additional exploration about ways to accomplish that. So I would not actually even, I would not agree to move Shellmount Way in the general plan, because I think that doing that would actually potentially undermine the ability for either this site or the properties on the south side of Shellmount Way to be developable one way or the other as housing, which is what this neighborhood needs to sustain all the other functions in it. With that said, I'm not opposed in any way to life sciences or biotech or other lab research use being the mixed-use component on this site and it being located with housing. I know I have, I've heard from some people that they don't think that those are compatible uses, and I understand that those are relatively new in terms of being approved for co-location. I don't write the state building code, and so I don't have an opinion as to why those changes were made, but that is the law, and so I would support that mixed use. My concern with the massing is the proposals that were provided by people who spoke earlier about setting it back from Christie is what would be actually at the ground level. I'm not opposed to relocating the massing. I don't oppose the applicant's proposal in terms of massing either, though. I don't want a parking garage facing the front corner of Shellmount Way and Christie. That's the thing I don't want to see, is a parking garage sticking out as people enter that neighborhood. I think that's the least pedestrian-friendly and the least hospitable thing we could do. I believe that we have to develop the bike pedestrian pass-through. If we are going to ultimately develop on this site, I think that has to be developed in conjunction with the city's circulation connectivity plan for pedestrians, and the vice mayor has been very vocal, and the B-PAC has been very vocal about that for a while. I think that the current proposal does seem to accommodate that, so I welcome that, but I also have questions about how the remaining bonus points would be accomplished, and I think that one consideration could be a lot more affordable housing. That's one way of doing it. I'm not sure, we didn't hear tonight a proposal for how to accomplish additional bonus points, the back half of the bonus points that are required, but I would just say, based on other comments I've heard, that housing is a priority for some folks, so I would consider how that could perhaps be integrated into the proposal, which would, in my opinion, serve to benefit the neighborhood. The street-level feel would be supportive of the affordable housing that will also go on the Christie sites, and it would support the public market. So with that being my comments, Sheri, would you please pull up the slide so I can give every member the opportunity? I'm going to call on you by name, since you're all going to go into the far-left column here in a second. Could you please pull up the slide that had Miru's last slide, or second-to-last slide, maybe it was Chad's, that had items for discussion, please?
Sorry, it's taking me a minute to get to it. And if one of the staff folks could remind me of the slide number?
It's probably just before that one. That would be it, right there.
Okay.
So members, I'm going to call on you and just ask if you have additional feedback for staff, as this is only a study session, no votes are being taken on any item this evening, and the applicant is just here to collect input from us. The first item is the mix of uses. The project is primarily a research and development building with six BMR townhomes. Does the council feel that the mix of uses is appropriate? I would just clarify, mix of uses, I would take to mean, do people feel research and development is compatible with townhomes, and do they support that, leaving aside for a moment the number of townhomes? I'll just actually, for this one, do people feel that those uses are compatible? Thumbs up or down? Okay, people are fine with that mix of uses. I think you've heard comments already about the number of townhomes, so I don't think any person giving a thumb up here has agreed to that number. Bonus points, does the council have any suggestions as to the type of community benefits that the project should provide to obtain the bonus points at this early stage? Do members wish to opine on that or reserve that for future time? If anyone, you can just raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Member Medina?
I would suggest the applicant look into improvements in the bike and pedestrian network connectivity as a possibility for bonus points, and also to look at a future item coming towards Planning Commission to allow for the use cross-laminated timber for potential bonus points that might be available later on this year.
Thank you. Any other members wish to make recommendations about bonus points? Member Martinez?
Yeah, I would just like to agree with the mayor that additional affordable housing units also would qualify for consideration of bonus points.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to give comments at this time? Member Donahue?
I support Vice Mayor Medina's consideration of cross-laminated timber potential bonus points. And I still have a question that would be good to be able to discuss, but maybe now it's too late, which is, what about the moving Shellmount Street? What real leverage do we have to make that happen at this site? And it is true, the parcels to the south of Shellmount Street are just cut off from pretty much everything in our town and are languishing, and that the original intent by moving Shellmount Street was to activate the entire set of parcels. Is there anything we could do to make that happen at this site? Or is it just the nature of, that the ownership is so separated that there's, there's no, we have no power to do that? So that's my question.
I'm going to attempt to answer this question, which is that the current status of the general plan actually requires that Shellmount Street be moved, and because of that, they cannot actually have this project approved unless we choose to amend the general plan. So they could not build the proposed building in the absence of us choosing to move Shellmount Street
Okay.
... plan to its current location, as was outlined by Miru. So I would just say, in terms of, if you're asking a question as to leverage, right now, any decision to approve a project on the site would need to come with a discretionary vote by the council to make an amendment to the general plan to relocate Shellmount Way to its current location from its status in the general plan as a relocated street. So that is an unresolved item, and it would be part and parcel of approving any project that would be proposed in this manner on the site. Staff, Madam City Manager, would you agree that that's an accurate assessment?
Miru, do you have any additional comments on that? I don't.
No, I think Mayor Bowders summed it up quite well.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on bonus points at this time? You don't have to. Okay, seeing none. Design and other issues, we've provided some preliminary concept design. This is your last opportunity to provide additional comment or feedback to the applicant, if you'd like. Member Martinez?
Thank you. I've already provided this comment to the developer, but I just want to put it on the record that in whatever iteration is finalized, I would hope that bicycle parking is adjacent or convenient to the housing units. Secure bicycle parking, excuse me.
Thank you. I would, I would, I don't know the answer to this question, so I'm going to just put it out there, but I, you know, there were a couple of members who have made suggestions related to cross-laminated timber. I support Member Donahue and Vice Mayor Medina, our Sustainability Committee members, for moving that item forward for bonus points. I don't know if lab and tech are allowed to have cross-laminated timber. I know it's been talked about for office and residential, so I just put it out there as an unresolved question for me. So perhaps staff could, at a future meeting, just inform us whether that's, whether they're compatible for cross-laminated timber and lab research uses for fire safety reasons. I don't know if that's the case.
We can certainly do that.
Thank you. I would also just agree with Member Martinez, and I would just add that I think that our, it's not on the agenda this evening, but our bicycle parking guidelines in our municipal code need to be updated to accommodate e-bikes, cargo bikes, and other types of bikes in terms of the design. So I would just recommend that the applicant, as you consider the development of your bicycle parking obligation, as the council member Martinez noted, I just think it needs to, you're invited to have conversations about what a more progressive version of that should look like, except we were probably going to have a conversation at that point, about that at some point as well ourselves. Any final comments from members? Okay, if not, I will ask if the applicants have any final questions for us before their study session is concluded this evening. Mr. Lee, do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
Yes, please. First and foremost, thank you very much for the thoughtful comments, which we've taken note of here. Obviously, the one kind of key comment for us to probably continue progressing this forward is the number of affordable housing units to be provided. And I guess my comment, or my question to council members is, what number of additional affordable housing units would begin to suffice for an acceptable mix of uses?
Does any member wish to answer Mr. Lee's question with their own personal opinion on that? Member Donahue?
Well, I was assuming we were going to get 17% of 214 units for how it was looking. It's a pretty big number.
That would be about, that would be about 37 units, somewhere in there.
That was what we were hoping for when this was a residential project.
Okay. So I hear Mr. Donahue saying, Member Donahue saying, the amount that was going to be the affordable requirement as an inclusionary obligation when the project was a residential project. Any other member wish to give an answer to Mr. Lee's question as to what they would like to see at this time? I think it depends on, it depends on other components of the project, and I think it depends on how you choose to obtain your bonus points, to be honest with you. So for me, there's additional things that were not proposed in the application study session that, after I hear what those would be, are you seeking to provide open space? Are you seeking to provide additional affordable housing as a part of your proposal? Do you believe that you can or should move the massing, things that are limited to your site, so I'm not even touching on adjacent properties that are not within the scope of your control? I think there's some unanswered elements to your proposal this evening. It's a high-level sketch, and I would be looking to see some additional information before I could give you an opinion on that, because you obviously could, as was noted by one public commenter, scale your project back in some ways to make space for other things. So I don't, I don't know yet until I see kind of what your priorities are. But I do believe that it is feasible to do housing here if it is designed with materials and in a way that is different, perhaps, than it's being proposed now. I don't think it's as easy as it was perhaps before, but I still believe it's feasible. Okay, anyone else wish to provide input to Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee, did you have any other questions you'd like to ask us before we conclude your study session?
I think there's one other comment I'd like to make in direct response to Vice Mayor Medina, if I could, noting the comment made about a potential bargaining chip and including the affordable units. And I think the, you know, I don't think we're viewing that as a potential bargaining chip. I think we've gone through a number of meetings and iterations now with the Planning Commission, having presented why a residential project en masse is not feasible. And ultimately, the Planning Commission's view was that this, you know, that infeasibility argument was not fully vetted, because we didn't look at this analysis of whether or not we could provide units within the base of the building. From our perspective, there's, you know, it certainly is a little odd to, and precedent-setting to incorporate any residential units within the base of the Life Science Tower, especially one of this size and scale. And so we're, you know, we're obviously looking to try and work with the Planning Commission and the city to find a, an acceptable mix of uses, having shown that it is feasible to provide a number of residential units within the base of the building, albeit it is slightly atypical.
Okay. Did you, so appreciate your comment. Did you have any, you or your team have any other comments or questions?
One other question I did have was just around the comments made around the general plan amendments and the potential relocation or the current location of Shellmount Avenue and in the hopes of activating the island site that currently is home to Airport Appliance and Lazy Boy. One of the elements of the analysis that we delivered to EPS as part of our feasibility study was around the site constraints that this current site has. And as we look at the general plan amendments, the proposed relocation of the current location of Shellmount within the general plan amendments actually bifurcates the current site into what is, in our view, two smaller, even more asymmetrical sites. And so I'm just curious if the council members have given thought to, you know, to what the benefit of the current, or the thought previously, the current location of Shellmount would be to bifurcate the site into two smaller parcels?
Current physical location or the current general?
Oh, the current general plan location, to create two smaller sites by essentially intersecting the current site.
So you're, just to be clear for the other members, you're referring to the site that you're proposing to develop, and then the site where the Lazy Boy and the home appliance store are? You're saying that essentially that those as subsites that are now adjoining and neighboring one another?
As subsites that are now joined and neighboring one another, but with the location of Shellmount within the general plan, it creates another parcel on the south side of Shellmount. Is that correct? That's not part of the Lazy Boy or the?
Yes, it's the parcel that would be the city's parcel, so the city parcel where the current physical right-of-way is located is a parcel in the general plan. Yeah. So the city, the city, I don't believe, has made any, had any discussion about what to do with that. It would be, the city would be moving the right-of-way, and it would be up to the city how to alienate that parcel or dispose of it, as it would be. But I think, as was mentioned, the prior discussions have always been to relocate Shellmount Way back to its current location, but I think that that was always done with the conversation that housing would be developed on this site. So that's one of the changes that is different to that conversation for me. But I'd like to recognize Mr. Bryant to give further explanation, if he's interested.
Thank you, Mayor Bowders. I would just like to add one point of context or history here. We've, redevelopment went away a long time ago now, over 10 years ago, but when the general plan was adopted, we still had redevelopment. And part of the thinking of relocating Shellmount Way was, with the eminent domain powers and the powers to assemble property that the redevelopment agency had, it might be possible to assemble all of the properties south of the relocated Shellmount Way into one single, larger, developable parcel. And that was a big part of the- And that was a big part of the thinking back then about why we wanted to think about relocating Shellmount Way. That, of course, is not part of the thinking anymore.
Excellent context. Thank you so much, Charlie.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, the study session has concluded. Madam Clerk, the time is seven fifteen PM, and I am adjourning this special study session meeting. Members, we are going to move into our next meeting. Madam Clerk, the time is seven fifteen PM, and I call to order this special meeting of the Management of Emeryville Services Authority. I'd like to just note for the record, as was announced prior to this meeting, that this meeting is being conducted pursuant to Assembly Bill 361 and the provisions that exclude certain requirements of the Brown Act, is being conducted via teleconference. Members of the public can provide public comment using the raise hand feature on Zoom, or by dialing star nine, or by submitting an electronic card online. Please note for the roll call, all members remain present. At this time, I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda for this meeting.
So moved?
Second.
A motion has been made by member Welch and seconded by member Donahue to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Count, Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. The approved, uh, agenda has been approved. Members of their ex parte communications. Seeing none. Now is the time for public comment for items not on the agenda. Members of the public wish to comment within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Mesa Board will be afforded one minute to do so. Charity, have you received any comment cards for this meeting?
We did not.
And seeing no hands raised, public comment for this meeting is now closed. We'll turn to action items. We have one action item. It's a resolution of the Board of Directors, extending the continuation of remotely held meetings for Mesa pursuant to AB 361. Is there any, we are, this was a consent item, so, I'm sorry, it's an action item. Is there any comment for the action item for one minute? Seeing none. Members, is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by member Martinez, seconded by Vice Mayor Medina to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. The resolution being approved. The time is seven seventeen PM, and I'm adjourning this meeting. The time is seven seventeen PM. I call to order the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Please note, as was previously stated at the outset of tonight's meetings, that this meeting is being conducted pursuant to provisions of, under AB 361, exempting us from the Brown Act. And all members remain present for this meeting. At this time, I will ask if there is a motion to approve this agenda.
So moved?
Second.
A motion has been made by member Martinez and seconded by member Donahue to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Thank you, members. Are there any ex parte communications for the redevelopment agency's agenda? Seeing none, now is the time for public comment for items not on the agenda or the consent calendar. Members of the public who wish to comment on the redevelopment agency will have one minute to do so. Charity, have you received any comment cards in electronic submission for tonight's meeting?
No, we didn't.
Okay. And seeing no hands raised, public comment is now closed, and we'll move to the consent calendar. Members, do you wish to pull anything or ask questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion has been made by member Martinez, seconded by member Donahue to approve the consent calendar's items. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Thank you. Those are approved. We have one action item, which is, again, the Assembly Bill 361, remotely held meetings resolution for the redevelopment agency. Is there any comment on the redevelopment agency's AB 361 motion? Seeing none. Are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Motion has been made by member Martinez, seconded by Vice Mayor Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Action item has been approved. The time is seven, seven night, seven twenty now. Madam Clerk, I will adjourn the redevelopment agency meeting. Madam Clerk, the time is seven twenty PM. Today is May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, and I'm calling to order the City of Emeryville's regular city council meeting. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to provisions under Assembly Bill 361 that exempt us from parts of the Brown Act related to in-person meetings. This meeting is being conducted via video teleconference every thirty days. The city council and all of its relative agencies and boards will make findings, finding that the COVID emergency continues to exist and that the health, safety, and welfare of our staff, the members of the public, and the members of this board are best served by conducting video and teleconference meetings. These agendas are posted online, and the opportunity to provide public comment exists using the raise hand feature on Zoom or dialing star nine. Likewise, members may submit an electronic submission card to the city clerk in advance on the city council's website, or by going to the agenda and finding the appropriate email or link. And I will now move to roll call.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Welch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bowers?
Here. Thank you. Approval of the final agenda for tonight's council meeting. Members, is there any changes? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made by member Donahue and seconded by member Welch to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Thank you for approving the agenda, members. Next is announcement of commission and committee vacancies. Madam Clerk?
Mayor and council members, as you know, we are currently recruiting for our community advisory committees with terms that are scheduled to end on June thirtieth. The applications are due by Sunday, June fifth, and appointments to those committees are scheduled to be made at the June twenty-first city council meeting. And just a note, as I've mentioned before, we understand that there are many longtime incumbents who, for various reasons, are not going to re-up this time. So everyone listening to this meeting, please, if you're interested, please apply, or tell your friends, and please, council members, mention it to all the people in your networks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is council members, special announcements or reports on meetings intended. Member Martinez, do you have any meetings you wish to report? No. Vice Mayor Medina, do you have any? No. Member Donahue? No. Member Welch? No. I will save reports on meetings. I'm currently in Washington DC as part of a cohort of Alameda County Transportation Commission members. I had meetings today with Senator Feinstein and Padilla in their offices, and we'll have meetings all week related to the bipartisan infrastructure bill and the opportunities to leverage and bring money back to Alameda County, including projects to the City of Emeryville. So I will have an update for that at a future time, and we'll keep this meeting moving on schedule by asking the city manager if she has a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder that Friday, May twentieth, is Bike To Wherever Day, and there will be several stations in Emeryville, and we hope everybody can participate. Thank you.
You're very welcome. That will bring us to ex parte communications. Members, do you have any ex parte communications to report? Please look at items eleven and twelve on the agenda. And I will begin by asking Vice Mayor Medina, do you have any ex parte communications to report?
No.
No. Member Donahue? You're on mute.
No.
No. Member Welch? Member Martinez?
I have none. Thank you.
I have no ex parte communications to report. Actually, that's not true. Item twelve point one, I held a town hall and heard from up close to sixty residents in the City of Emeryville and other stakeholders, and would like to report that I conducted that meeting. Okay, so that will move us to item nine, which is public comment for the consent calendar items not on the agenda. Members of the public who wish to comment for the consent calendar items not on tonight's agenda will have two minutes to do so for these items. Charity, have you received any written comments in advance of tonight's meeting for the consent calendar?
We did receive one comment for an item not on the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. This comes to us from, uh, no name stated. I wish to comment about the Stanford Park crisis. For at least two months, human feces have been in place in Stanford Park, on the toddler swings, on the slides, and on the plane structures. Parents are frustrated by this, and calls have been made to the police for extra patrol, but so far it hasn't helped. We ask that the city council please do something quickly. Whether a detective needs to be hired or other action, they decide. Thank you, Stanford Park parents and kids. And that's the end of the comment, and I will say that this comment was also forwarded to our Public Works Department, and they are aware of the situation.
And thank you. I'd like to, I'd like to ask if you would forward that to each council member as well, so that we're aware of receipt of that comment.
Sure.
Thank you so much. Okay, now we'll go to present public comment, and I'd like to recognize for two minutes Brian Donahue, please.
All right, go, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Why two minutes? Why not the standard three? But I'll go ahead with my two minutes. I would like to, listeners, to pay no heed to what the city clerk said earlier about the city wanting people, residents to join city committees, because what we have found is with this iteration of the council, they're not interested in dissenting voices on the committees. What they want are rubber stamping committees. And so if you have any different ideas about how the city should develop, you will not be selected to be on a committee. But if you agree with the council, you will get selected, most likely, especially if you're popular and you agree with the council. And so let's just, you know, it's, it's, I don't think we should have this cynical ploy of democracy. I think what we should do is just not join and have the city councils just call people and tell them you're our selected person and just put, have the council just actively themselves put people on the committees. I don't think we should pay, be part of this ploy, because it's not democratic. You guys don't like dissenting voices. And then I wanted to say that I think we should go back to having live meetings. COVID thing is not an emergency anymore. We don't legally, it's, it's safe now, according to many government agencies. And to not have live meetings is to have a pale facsimile to democracy. It's not really free-flowing democracy anymore with these Zoom meetings. Old people, you'll notice, don't even come to them, because they can't, because they don't know how to use computers, or poor people don't have computers. It's just, it, it, it's fine during an actual emergency, because we have no other choice, and it's better than, better than having zero democracy, but it's a pale comparison. And so it's not an emergency anymore. I say you get rid of these Zoom meetings and instead have, go back to having actual meetings in person like other cities have done, including our neighbor.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry, unmuted accidentally.
Sorry. Okay. Any other members of the public who wish to comment for the consent agenda or things not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no additional hands, public comment is now closed, and I will turn to item ten, which is the consent calendar. Members, items ten point one through ten point four are up for your consideration this evening. Are there any comments on the consent calendar items or items that members wish to remove? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
I'll move consent.
I second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Vice Mayor Medina and seconded by member Donahue to approve the consent calendar. Before you call the roll, Madam Clerk, I would just like to note for the record that during item eight, we lost member Welch, so let the record reflect that we lost her at some point during this meeting, but it was in item eight. And with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
I'm sorry, Clerk Hearts, I was just able to get back on. Can you repeat the question?
Oh, we're just calling.
Sorry, there's a motion, a motion on the consent calendar in front of you.
Approved, or aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Thank you, and welcome back. We lost you there for a moment. Okay, we'll move to our only public hearing of the evening. The public hearing, item eleven point one, is a first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville eliminating bicycle license and registration requirements in sections four dash one point oh three through four dash one point oh five of Title Four of the Emeryville Municipal Code. And I believe Ms. Crowell will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Bowers and council members. Tonight, you will be considering a draft ordinance that repeals three provisions from chapter one of Title Four of the Emeryville Municipal Code related to bike license requirements. Just by way of background, the council requested back in July of two thousand twenty that staff should bring back an item to eliminate some or all of the criminal penalties in the municipal code. Staff presented a study session to the council on those penalties in September of two thousand twenty, and the council requested that certain chapters should be set to committees for discussion. And while the committees and, and the city attorney's office are still reviewing some of those chapters in full, the council specifically requested that bike license requirements be brought back for consideration ahead of the other provisions, and that's why they're before you tonight. These provisions generally make it illegal to ride a bike in the city without a city-issued bike license. Your staff report this evening contains some additional information regarding the historical reasons for bike licenses, the diminished need for local registration now, given some national registries, and the use of these types of requirements in pretextual stops. The Transportation Committee unanimously recommended repeal of sections four dash one point oh three through four dash one point oh five, and that is the draft ordinance we have before you tonight. And the city attorney and I are here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Crowell. Members, are there any clarifying questions about the proposed rescission of the three sections of municipal code that are before us tonight, as was outlined by the special city council assistant, I'm sorry, special city council with a S E L at the end of it, for the city?
I'll take any title, sure.
It's late here, it's late here where I'm at. Seeing no questions, this is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, the time is seven thirty-one PM. I am hereby opening the public hearing. Here you hear, all you wish to come and speak on the public hearing. Item eleven point one will be afforded three minutes to do so, as this is a public hearing. And did we receive any written comments for this public hearing, Madam Hearts?
We did not.
Okay, and I see no hands raised. So, and now there is a hand raised. That's what happens when I say those things. So I'd like to recognize Mr. Donahue for three minutes, please.
How about a bee license? How about a bee license if you have a pet bee? Like, I have a pet bee. His name's Eric. Actually, he's half a bee, because he had an accident. But I would like you to consider the issuance of bee licenses.
I guess that's it.
Okay, that's the end of the public comment. Thank you so much. Any other members of the public who wish to comment? Seeing none. The time, Madam Clerk, is seven thirty-two PM, and this hearing is now closed, and I will return to the council for discussion. Members, are there, is there anybody who wishes to discuss this item at all? Vice Mayor Medina?
I move that we waive first reading and read by title only.
Okay. There's a motion on the table to waive to read by title only?
I'll second.
Okay, and there's a second. Before we call the roll on that, I would just like to thank the city attorney's office and Ms. Crowell and the staff for working through the massive task that we gave them back in two thousand twenty to help find ways to decriminalize and de-emphasize criminal punishment in our municipal code. That is not a minor undertaking. One of the most offensive components of it, however, has always been for me the requirement for bicycle license and registration. While it has been a folly for the last forty to fifty years in municipal government to attempt to actually secure payment for bicycle licenses and actually give license plates and registrations to bicycles, largely because the cost of administering that as a city far exceeds the cost of a bicycle license or registration, and it becomes an administrative burden. It is humorous to me that I did research and every city I have ever lived in has such a requirement, and I have never once registered a bicycle or licensed it in my life. And so I have been a lawbreaker since I first got on training wheels. And just think that it's often been used, unfortunately, as a pretense, not in this community perhaps, but in many communities, as a pretense to stop and search people of color who do not have that, or to seize bicycles in some communities as well. And in pursuit of our goal of creating a more just and equitable society, it is important for us to review our laws, not for how often they're used, but for the message they convey when they remain on our books, and the opportunity that remains for them to be misapplied or misused to the abuse of other people's civil rights. So I'm grateful to the council for allowing this item to come forward in recognition of Bike Month, and I want to thank the Vice Mayor for supporting that through the Transportation Committee process. And so with that, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Medina, seconded by member Martinez, to read by title only. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Okay, we will read by title only. City Attorney's Office. Ms. Crowell or Mr. Kennedy? Ms. Crowell, do you want to take it from here?
Well, there's a motion and a second, and if.
So this is the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville eliminating bicycle license and registration requirements in sections 4-103 through sections 4-105 of Title IV of the Emeryville Municipal Code, bicycles.
Thank you. Okay, the title having been read, members, is there a motion on the item?
To move the item.
Okay, I would like to take the privilege of seconding that item if members would be fine with that. So there's a motion by the Vice Mayor and a second by myself to approve this ordinance at first reading. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye, thank you very much, members. This will be before you again at another council meeting for second reading. Okay, that will bring us to item 12.1. Item 12.1 is discussion of a possible ballot measure for 2022 and the discussion and direction on next steps. And Madam City Manager, and I believe Bonnie Moss is here as well.
She is here to be an observer and answer questions as necessary. Mr. Mayor, I have a brief presentation to sort of bring you up to remind you how far we've come on this and to seek council direction. We have two specific questions tonight before you. One is whether the council would like to proceed with another community poll, and the second, if, if so, on what measure. So before you tonight, there were two items in your packet. Next slide, please. As you'll recall, and this is a brief overview of the activity that's been undertaken just since the fall of 2021. This does date back to the spring of 2021 when this process was kicked off by the Budget and Governance Committee, but just shortly, in November of 2021, the council authorized the staff to retain consultants and to conduct a community poll. This is after you had received some information about possible revenue raising ballot measures for the election cycle of 2022. That poll was conducted in December by FM3. On January 18th of 2022, FM3 made a presentation of those poll results, and your direction was to forego possibilities for revenue measures in the June ballot of this year and to focus on November of 2022. The next month, your Budget and Governance Committee met with our consultant Clifford Moss, Bonnie Moss, who's with us tonight, to discuss the development of a community engagement process to seek feedback and input from the community of Emeryville about what types of services they were interested in and prioritized, and what types of revenue measures they would consider to be of interest to them. That community engagement process occurred during the months of April and May. Next slide, please. It consisted of meeting with the community advisory committees, and all of you who are council liaisons know that because you joined us in that process. We went to the Commission on Aging, the Public Art Committee, the Parks and Rec Committee, the BPAC, and the Budget Advisory Committee. The, the comments for most of those committees were summarized in the report that was provided to you. Additionally, a website, a survey was posted on the city's website in April, seeking feedback, offering another opportunity for people to provide comments and feedback. Initial results of that were also provided to you in your staff report. I think at the time of publication, we had about five comments. And then finally, as the mayor mentioned earlier this evening, he conducted a town hall by Zoom last week on Monday, May 9. We're pleased to report that we had over 50 attendees, and they submitted over 80 comments and questions over the 90 minutes that the mayor walked through that process. We received a lot of feedback. Those, those comments were also summarized for you, actually not summarized, they were stated verbatim almost, in a supplemental report that was published for this agenda last Thursday. The comments were grouped in the areas that people, the themes that people addressed in those comments, which were very, very similar to the themes that were addressed in those community advisory committee meetings. People talked about the possible revenue measure, and particularly the modification to the transfer tax, which I'll get to in the next slide. Items of concern around public safety, addressing homelessness, and also maintenance and public works needs throughout the city, as well as there were a number of questions and comments about development and development projects. Next slide, please. This is the text of a transfer tax measure that was tested in that December poll. You have seen this before. This is the type of measure that was discussed at the town hall and also at some of the committees. What this measure would do is modify the city's existing real property transfer tax. The current rate for that tax is $12 per thousand of sale value, and again, that tax is collected at the time a property is sold. The modification that's reflected in this draft measure would increase that rate to $15 per thousand for property sales between a million and 2 million, and increase it again to $25 per thousand for property sales above 2 million. This is similar in type to tiered transfer tax rates in both Berkeley and Oakland. Next slide, please. The other next one. So the timeline, if the city council chooses to move forward tonight, is that another poll would be conducted through the, at the end of May through early June. We would bring the results of that poll back to you at your June 21st meeting, at which time we would ask you to give us direction about whether to draft a measure for the November 2022 ballot. If you gave us that direction, we would return with the necessary legislation for that measure at your July 5th meeting and any follow-up legislation at your July 19th meeting. The election must be called no later than 88 days before the election, which is early August, but your last scheduled regular meeting is July 19th. Next slide, please. So finally, the two questions I have for you tonight. Should the city undertake another poll? And if so, what tax measure should be assessed during that poll? That's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions or provide any additional information. And again, we also are joined by Bonnie Moss. If you have questions for our consultant, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Members, do you have any clarifying questions for Madam City Manager or Ms. Moss? Okay, seeing none, now is the opportunity for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on this item will have three minutes to do so. Madam Clerk, did we receive any written comment cards?
We did not.
Okay. Public comment is now closed. We will go to discussion. Members, do you wish to discuss? There are two questions that were presented by the city manager for this item. The first is, do you wish to do additional polling? And the second is, if yes, which type of tax or revenue measure would you be interested in polling further, if any? So I will leave this open for members to raise their hands as they wish. I'd like to suggest that my friend on the Budget and Governance Committee, who's been part of this process, maybe go first, just because she's had a lot of exposure to this. Member Martinez?
I have. I am interested in doing additional polling, and I would request that that polling be on the same question that we've tested previously, which is the real property transfer tax with the same ballot language. Reason I would ask for a new poll is because our fluctuating financial climate for folks may be giving them different ideas about how they feel about this particular tax. I, I do, the feedback that I received in our discussion in the Commission on Aging was that this type of tax would be preferable to others because it's, as was stated with the staff report, it's at the time of a sale. And I think it's also structured correctly to impact those high-dollar properties and impact those above 2 million the most, so it is, in my view, progressive. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, and I will just go ahead and cut the line and just say I second every comment that was just made, so I don't have any additional comments. Member Donahue?
Yes, I listened to the town hall meeting you had, and it just seems like that point of view of that method is the most acceptable. And on Parks and Rec and other members of our community I've talked to, it's very, you know, it's, it's the least controversial. So I, I, I agree, and to think of doing another poll is a good idea because there, there is a lot of financial uncertainty happening, and while that first poll we did made this tax a strong likelihood to pass, it just, I think we need the feedback because that was quite a while ago for how things have been moving in this world.
Thank you, Member Donahue. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah, I, I support what other people have said about their transfer tax being the correct one to move forward with. Honestly, though, I'm kind of curious, like, what are we going to do with outcomes of a poll? We need a revenue generating measure. This is the strongest one. I highly doubt the members are going to ship south of 15, like, 15% drop in favorability for it would get us down below that 50, which is still swingable, in my opinion. How much does a poll cost? Do we actually think we need another poll?
It's a fair question. I'll just add one point for us, the city manager to weigh in, which is that it's always a better use of money upfront to poll something before you go through the expenditure of actually balloting the item because it could have long-term consequences for the city and the council in terms of a mandate to act on things. If voters feel that they've rejected something that was tied to that measure, as you obviously know well, you and I do a lot of this work, I think that's important. The other thing is that we will do more polling around the messages and what, what things work for and against the measure, which become critical to any campaign that would actually be developed, but we can't talk about that. So it's just really important for us to gather that information so that we message with residents properly.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add an additional comment on that, within that regard. One of the things that we learned in the prior poll was how sensitive the negative messaging was, how sensitive the measure was to negative messaging. And so I think it's worthwhile to assess whether voters have more concerns now with inflation and other things, generally about taxes. And the poll can inform you about the sensitivity in terms of the likelihood of passage. So that is why we are recommending that, you know, if, if you ask us, would we recommend that we're moving forward with it? I think we would. I see that Ms. Moss has her hand up, and I think maybe can add some additional flavor.
Yeah, Ms. Moss?
Yes, can everybody hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. So I would just concur with the comments made by several of you that it's really important to take the temperature before you go to the ballot. We are very data-driven in this process, and virtually all of the public sector clients that we work with are, if they are looking at November, they are conducting that final short tracking poll that we're recommending in this case before you make final decisions. So we know that you are blessed with a very supportive elective electorate here in Emeryville, and we still believe that it's really important to take the temperature, and as the mayor has said, there are several different angles that our pollsters use to understand where is the electorate today based on real-time conditions. In this case, it'll be end of May, early June, when we're really understanding where they're at. So we would, we would recommend going forward.
Okay, others with comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Madam City Manager, this is an action item. Are you looking for direction or a motion?
Looking for a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Members, is there anyone who would like to make a motion on the two items that have been requested by the city manager for discussion this evening? First being, would we like to do polling, and the second being, if so, on what? Vice, I'm sorry, Member Martinez?
Yeah, I'd like.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead and make a motion, go ahead.
I'll, I'll make the motion to undertake another poll and have that poll be on an amended real property transfer tax.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Medina?
And I actually didn't get an answer to a question that's part of my comment from the city manager or Ms. Moss, which is, how much does a poll cost?
It's included in the contract that you approved on May 3rd with Clifford Moss. It's approximately $28, $29,000.
Okay, that's fine. Honestly, I don't think we need it, but sure.
Okay.
My professional opinion is, whatever the hell it comes back with, we can run this and suffer through, but fine.
Okay. I will make a second to Member Martinez's motion. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers?
Aye. Thanks for suffering through with those, Vice Mayor. I appreciate your physical help in this moment, so. Okay. That will bring us, thank you, Ms. Moss, for being here this evening. That will bring us to item 12.2, which is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, making required findings to allow for the continuation of remotely held meetings of the City Council pursuant to AB 361. Members, are there questions on the standard resolution? Okay, if not, is there public comment on this item? Allow two minutes for public comment on this item. Madam City Clerk, did you receive any written comment cards?
No written comments, but we have one raised hand.
I see that. Mr. Donahue, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
I'll say again, unless it's an emergency, and COVID is not an emergency at this point, I think the onus is on you to have, have democracy returned to Emeryville like it has done in for many of our neighboring cities. What we have now is a piss-poor comparison. And like I said, old people are just pretty much completely carte blanche shut out. And, and then even a lot of other people are shut out, especially poor people. So I just think we should have in-person meetings, go back to that. It served us well for, since the inception of Emeryville up until 2020, and there's no longer an emergency. And we should do, it's not controversial, our neighboring cities have done it, so that we should do, we should follow suit because we are believers in democracy in Emeryville.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, members, is there any discussion? Member Martinez?
I was just wondering if I could respond very briefly to the speaker. I just want to refer him to Assembly Bill 1944 introduced by the person who may be the most progressive Democrat in the state assembly, Alex Lee, to require remote participation for members of the public at certain public meetings because it actually increases the ability for people with different schedules, people who are poor, people who are older, as Zoom is available on everyone's phones for those who are not able to physically make it into public meetings. Thank you.
Member Donahue?
I just want to say it's so great not catching what Ali has right now.
I'm so happy that you all are not exposed to it now.
It's an interesting, in real-time comment, Mr. Donahue. I appreciate that. Vice Mayor Medina? Yeah, you're right. Vice Mayor Medina?
I, I second Member Donahue's comments that I'm happy I'm not exposing you all to germs or happy to completely miss this meeting. I'm so excited to be awake right now and to have this meeting.
Yeah, I, I will, I will say, the only statement that was made by the public that I don't completely agree with is the governor has declared a state of emergency. To say there's no emergency, you're essentially just disagreeing with the governor's position, and I understand that we have the ability to make a different choice, and I think that that is a complicated set of considerations because I will just share, and I'm sure she probably wouldn't appreciate me doing this, but I'm going to do this to make my point. So my sister lives with an autoimmune disease, and despite having both vaccinations and a booster shot, my sister recently contracted COVID because she lives in a state that doesn't take the item seriously. She contracted it from her kindergartner who got it at school, and she lived with extreme chest pain while she was trying to overcome COVID. So it is, it is not, it is not going to go away. It is going to become something we have to adapt to, and I do believe that your point about needing to return in person is. your point about needing to return in person is something that does need to be evaluated more carefully. And I think that council members are aware of that. But I also would just say that even for people who have been vaccinated, the idea that we have somehow all come out of the woods on this item because we see more people willing to be out without masks or do things that they weren't doing perhaps twelve months ago is not necessarily emblematic of where all people are. And so, as somebody who has elderly grandparents, but also has a sibling who's younger than me, who have a different experience than perhaps you do, I, I just would disagree with you that there's not necessarily no emergency here. So, Member Welch?
And just to note, many of us have very young children who are not eligible to get vaccinated at all at this point. So I appreciate the focus on safety for those who still do not have access to vaccines.
Thank you. Okay, so after having, we've given this item more comment than I think we've ever given it. But that being said, is there any further discussion of not all undertaking a motion on this item?
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by a Member Martinez and seconded by Vice Mayor Medina to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Welch?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bouders?
Aye. That resolution passes. Item thirteen is Department Head Reports. I see none listed. Madam City Manager, there are none this evening. Okay. Item fourteen is Future Agenda Item Requests. Item thirteen, we have public comment on item thirteen. I will recognize Mr. Donahue for one minute for Department Head Reports.
City Manager should report, I hope she does, that the Councilmember Martinez's comment is about the, you can either have Zoom meetings, or you can have in-person meetings, or the only two options is an error. It's erroneous. I never proposed getting rid of the Zoom meetings. You can have hybridized meetings, which is what the other cities are doing. So you can have in-person and Zoom. So, and that's what's being done among our neighbors. And then, I listened to what you guys said, and of course, the five of you are against in-person meetings. There's no upside for the five of you. But there is only upside for the rest of us who have an interest in democracy. You guys are in control, and we're the plebeians. We want to have our voices have more of a say at public discussions, at public policy discussions in, in our City Hall. So it's, it's, it's in our interest to have in-person meetings, even though it's not in your interest to do it. I understand that, but it'll never be in your interest.
That's your time.
And thank you.
And just to hammer home the point of the public having an interest in having their voice heard and it not being adequately heard on Zoom, I just allowed a public comment for an item that had literally no agenda attached to it. So we'll move on to Agenda Item fourteen, which is Future Agenda Item Requests from Councilmembers. Is there any Councilmember who wishes to add an agenda item for the future meeting? Okay, seeing none. We have no Future Agenda Item Requests this evening. Members, the time is seven fifty-eight. This meeting is adjourned. And give me one moment, members. Okay, members, the time is seven fifty-nine now. And I would call to order the City of Emeryville's special closed session meeting. I will just note for the record that this meeting is being conducted pursuant to Assembly Bill three sixty-one and its exemptions to the Brown Act, as was reauthorized earlier this evening. I will note for the record that all members remain present, and I will ask if there are any ex parte communications this evening from members. Seeing none. Okay, that will move us to public comment for the closed session. There will be two minutes of public comment for the closed session. And recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes, please.
It would be, it would be nice if I, if me and the rest of the Emeryville citizens and the neighboring communities could be, could speak in-person about this, but you are precluding this, I think, on, on the weak, the thinnest of principles, or the thinnest of reasons. If you think that it's just crazy to have in-person meetings, well, then I, I put it to you that you think that our neighboring cities are crazy. Because our neighboring cities are doing this. And like I said, COVID is going to be with humanity for the rest of humanity. So, you, you know, and then there's more diseases coming. I think, that doesn't mean we have to dispense with, largely dispense with democracy. And I just put it to you again, old people can't do these meetings. Neither can poor people very easily, or if at all. And in-person meetings are more democratic, just period, by definition. And I'll, I'll say it again, you guys don't, aren't interested in that. It makes sense because when we can come speak before you, it's uncomfortable for you sometimes. Sometimes we offer criticism and offer different ideas for public policy that you don't want to hear, and it's uncomfortable for you. And I, I put it to you, and it's more uncomfortable for you when it's in person than when it's via Zoom. And that's why it's not in your interest to have public meetings. But I think you should have, be more empathetic to the people's needs here and be more pro-democratic and not just be so sure of yourselves that what you're doing is right. I mean, like I said, your neighbor, our neighboring cities have done it. Does that make them all reckless and like health scare, I mean, like engaging in pandemic furtherance? No, I mean, I just, it's ridiculous. I think we should seek to, to increase democracy, democracy to the maximum extent that's practical and, and reasonable. And I think that means, at this point, opening up meetings to the public.
Hey, thank you. So many things I want to say, but I'm not going to do that because we have business to attend to. So we will move to the closed session, which is item five point one, Public Employee Employment. We have one item. So we will adjourn to the closed session meeting, members, and then we will come back at the end to report out on any actions that may be taken at that time. So I'll see you all there in a minute.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to check and make sure the booth is ready for reconvening.
Thank you, Sherri.
Okay, we're all set.
Okay, I don't see Member Donahue here, but I'm gonna go ahead. So the time is 8:41 and we are reconvening from the closed session. And reporting out of closed session on item 5.1.1, on a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Donahue with a vote of five to zero, the City Council accepted the resignation notice and retirement of City Manager Christine Daniel effective July 31, 2022. And I just want to take a moment, this is not an agenda item, I just want to take a brief moment and let the City Manager know that we are all extremely deeply grateful for your service and your time here in the city of Emeryville. And at a more appropriate time outside of the report out of a closed session, we will find a way to celebrate and honor your career in public service. So thank you for your service and that is the report out of closed session. Madam City Manager, the time is 8:42 and this meeting is adjourned.